So pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, chapter 38, section 18, and the governor's March 15, 2020 order imposing strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Hubbardson Board of Selectmen will be conducted by a remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information in the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and/or parties. But the right and/or requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the town website. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time by a Zoom. In the event that we were unable to do so, despite best efforts, we will post the towns, this post on the town's website, a comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting.
Okay, thank you. So we'll, we'll start with open session. So I see that there's, you know, seven participants right now. And we're all panelists and that you've extended out the sort of invitation via the chat for anyone who wants to chime in to do so. I don't see anything. Has anything come into you in a different way?
Not tonight, no.
Okay, sounds good. So I guess we'll get right to it. We have, we have one announcement.
Yes, I don't know if Katie wants to talk about the dingy dash and what this year's version is going to look like. And, um, and what we're going to do to, to have that great event in August.
Uh, well, yeah, we're going, I'm going in front of the Board of Health tomorrow on their Zoom meeting just to get, you know, final approvals, hopefully, and everything like that. Uh, we talked about, it's going to be the same kind of thing as the fair. We ask people where their masks, everyone, you know, stick in your family groups. You spread apart, but pretty much that, that event is very spread apart anyway. Most people kind of sit along the edges and you kind of group together by your group and that's it. You're spread apart. So we should be fine, um, hopefully, and I'll start actually, once I get full permission, going after people to, to enter and sponsors and getting everything all squared away. But hopefully it'll be another good year as long as, you know, we get the final approvals and another fun Hubbardson unique event.
Is the fire department, you already contacted them? They, they are similarly involved?
Uh, they usually just go out in the boat just to make sure everyone's fine. I'll double check with them to make sure it's all good. I haven't been down there in a while, but yeah, that's, I always go down there and I need somebody in the boat just in case.
All right, sounds good. All right, Ryan, that's it for announcements. And I don't see that we have any presentations.
Not tonight.
Okay, sounds good. Um, so we're on item four A, so COVID-19 update. I know you've got a little bit in the, in the town administrative report too, but how would you like to sort of let us know if there's anything that we need to be updated on here?
Sure. So the, the biggest COVID-related topic besides national numbers and trends at the state level is schools, school reopening. So this, this isn't, this isn't my lane per se. I'm not in charge of this, but do like to provide updates for people who watch these meetings. That the, um, each district is being asked to lean in towards a in-person plan for Commissioner Riley. And they are supposed to have plans in place for early August to discuss a recommendation of an in-person, a hybrid or a remote plan. So that, that decision is coming and that decision will impact not only a tremendous amount of our residents, especially our young non-voting residents, but also budget implications, et cetera. So we're encouraging people to reach out to their, their school committee or us if they need contact information to stay in contact with our schools, and that includes Monty Tech as well. So, um, school updates, very important and going to try and keep it posted on, on our side of it as much as possible. In terms of the town offices, um, we've made the decision to keep the appointment, uh, appointment-based visits to town offices through the month of August. So the reason for this is to keep, um, folks from, from simply just visiting the town offices. Uh, the majority, the major reason for this is our town departments are usually staffed by one person, maybe two. And we just can't afford to lose anybody, um, in, in the functions of that department. However, that being said, we do want to emphasize and we'll put out a tremendous amount of information this week and next week that appointment-based does not mean don't come to the town offices. It just means make sure that your employee is, is there and ready for you and that you have some business to conduct with, with the town offices. So we will be relaxing with that means. If you want to come in and talk to one of our staff members, you can. We're just asking that you reach out first in that, um, we just don't have folks coming in for, for no business at all. And this is pretty consistent with towns in our region and towns across Massachusetts out of an abundance of caution.
So we've, um, just to add real quick, so we, you know, the, the, especially if you've got kids and maybe if they're playing, um, sports programs and stuff, that's been a major item as far as when updates come from the governor or, or from the office that determines, um, how the phases go and what, what is relaxed or what is eased or what is added to the different phases and different allowable sort of activities. That's been evolving. So there's going to, you know, and it's been getting more in Massachusetts, um, uh, it's more open. So I think people should get prepared to see more people, um, up at the Hubbardson Rec fields, um, you know, doing things that have been, um, sort of made allowable, for lack of a better word to put it. So, um, I guess just wanted to say that out loud.
Yes, and, uh, just in, in terms of people who have questions, reach out to us for sure. The Board of Health is the local authority in terms of interpreting and enforcing the standards as put forth by the governor. So we are as open as, as we can be under the limitations set forth by the Board of Health. So they meet monthly. They encourage people to, to reach out and they've been pretty responsive to, to people's ideas, um, and, and questions. So then the last, the last piece that we've been working is what do we do about our senior programming and senior services? So I've been meeting with, with Claudia and members of the council on aging to discuss what, what are senior services going to look like, not just tomorrow, but for, for the next year or so, as, as this seems to be looking like it's trending towards a, towards a longer term thing. So I'm working with the seniors to develop a plan and the plans that we're looking at right now are not the services that people are used to. So I just want to put out information about that. So there will not be an abundance of, of singing seniors in the senior center, closely gathered and doing that type of service. It's, it's just not possible during this time. But we are looking at how we can use the CARES Act in order to facilitate outdoor programming or, um, find ways to get seniors to come, to come out of their homes and to gather in a, in a safe way, being that they're a vulnerable population. We want to protect them, but also make sure that, that they have the services. So we're, we're working on those things. There's more to come on it. Certainly open to suggestions and Claudia and I have toured or looked at other plans and toured for sure the Rutland facility to see what they're doing. Like everyone else, council and aging are all over the place. The bigger that you are in terms of the city or town, the more likely you are to have an expanded array of services. The smaller you are, the more likely you are to be shut down. So we want to try and find a middle ground for our seniors. And, uh, just want to put that out there in case the board wants to reach out to me or any members of the public to talk about any comments, concerns or ideas in terms of, in terms of that population. And that is, uh, the COVID update unless there's any questions or comments from the board.
Uh, no, I don't see any. Um, so let's move on. So we've got the fiscal year 20 and 21 budget updates, um, all in one.
Yes. So the, for fiscal year 20, we have closed the year. We are working towards, uh, closing the year out. So we know what our financial situation is heading into what would normally be the start of our FY22 discussions. As we've already passed a version of the FY21 budget. So we were able to meet our revenue numbers. We don't have the exact numbers yet because we're still moving stuff around and reconciling with the CARES Act, uh, normal, normal procedures for the end of the year. We also know that, as I told you last time, that our free cash number should be, should be enough to sustain what we need to in terms of the operating budget and, and some capital. So it was some good news out of FY20. I just wanted to share the CARES Act with you. Forgive me for one sec. All right. So we talk a lot about the CARES Act. I just wanted to give you a visual. So what is going on is the federal and the state government have offered money in order to support municipalities. And these extra mandates have been put on us in order to open things or close things or make sure that our employees and, and residents are safe. So the majority of money comes from FEMA and MEMA. The board's definitely used to this with winter storms and other local states of emergency that have been declared. So 75% of sanitation, uh, emergency services coverage, police and fire, et cetera, are covered through FEMA, MEMA. And then the CARES Act is this federal money that was, was granted to the state that they have allocated down to us. Uh, in, in certain, by population is how it went. So we submitted for a CARES Act grant and immediately got the money from the state to fund FY20 purchases. That's this submitted category. This was a combination of things we'd already spent and things we were estimating to spend for FY20. So then we actually have found and vetted and worked through all of this, all of the items that, that we can justify as COVID-related expenses, non-budgeted as of March 27th. And we have put those here and Dennis O'Donnell and I are working on the, the FEMA application for the federal reimbursement on that end. And then everything will be reconciled against the CARES Act money. Anything we didn't spend will go back to the state. Anything we did spend will come to the town to reimburse us for these costs. This is all being tracked.
Real quick.
Sure.
Just saying, so submitted was projected and accounted is actual?
Yes. So working down, um, just so people can, can see. So you see what's here, accounted is what was actually submitted. These numbers in column F are the warrants that, the, when that was spent. So we, we do it by warrant. So we can track when the expense was done. So the first initial stuff for the slave building is sanitation and protection-related equipment. Additional hours for our custodian. Information technology is stuff that we added to have our employees working remote. To ask things of them, like to use their cell phone, their computers if they needed them or to get them computers. And then also to, um, to work on their workspaces to make sure that, that they had the ability to provide services. And, and to be candid, most of our employees are using their own things to, you know, to save the amount, the town money. We've asked them several times. So there's a lot of, uh, pro bono work going on out there. So we're just trying to support them. The election, and it's going to be much worse in FY21, but the election, we needed additional coverage and, um, the, the ability to provide faster services. So you're going to see this for 21 for sure, but we need more booths, more voting machines. We expect an 85% turnout for the presidential election. So the, the town election is not a good example of what's to come. So if we had 85%, you'd be smashing a thousand people into a very small space. So we need to really plan for that and the CARES Act is going to help us do that. Um, under your selectmen expenses, this is the legal bills that came in because of COVID and the port bodies for the outdoor town meeting, which was really the only cost that we had. And then, uh, some, some stuff to help our treasurer, just a printer to print checks at home and, and to, um, move all of our payroll systems online. Some minimal costs there. The biggest one, as the board knows, is the police overtime. So this is been done, as I told you, by almost every community and all of the extra shifts that we did should be covered by both FEMA and the CARES Act. So there should be no cost to us in, in the long run. And this will continue in FY21 with police and fire. The DPW overtime you see here, um, we had a suspected exposure to COVID in our DPW early on in the, in the pandemic or the, the response to the pandemic. So we sent everybody home out of an abundance of caution. And we're charging that time off because we wouldn't have done it if it wasn't for COVID and we didn't charge our employees their, their PTO for that. Uh, because we were mandating that they go home. And this is again, is a very common expense and one that we'll see a lot in FY21. We will be sending people home, um, for, for good reasons to, in order to protect the entirety of the town.
And we're just stepping back for one second. So police-wise, have we received any of that 54,000 we've spent yet?
25% of it.
We received how much?
25%.
Okay.
And we will, we expect to receive the rest of it by the end of quarter one. So FEMA is acting a lot faster than they normally do. And this is all being accounted for in a, in an account that's outside of FY20 or 21. It's just called the COVID account for easy, easiness to understand. So this money will come in and reconcile on its own outside of the operating budget, which is how it's intended to happen. So in, this is 20 and in 21, uh, we are doing the same type of projections. A lot of this is, is very, very conservative on the high end is what I mean. But what we will need to keep ourselves open, to change out the building footprints, to move stuff out of our offices so we can have more space, to make sure we have remote capacities. You'll see a tremendous amount of stuff that we're going to need for the election and, and I can't emphasize how different the election will be. So these costs, although might seem high to some, are just being discussed all over the place in terms of every municipality. The election is going to be a thing.
So you don't think, or they don't think that, that the, the ability to be able to write in, um, votes is going to make a much of a difference?
They, they do, which is why it was so pushed and why we'll advertise it heavily. But even that has additional cost to it with the mailings, et cetera. But the idea is a town like ours is used to voting in the center school. One way in, one way out and, um, booths, you know, the, the famous wooden booths that are all connected, it can't be in, in a COVID environment. So we need to get more booths. We need to get more machines to process things faster. Otherwise, we're going to have really long lines, which you don't normally have in Hubbardson, which increases exposures, et cetera. So we're lucky that we're Hubbardson and not some of the big cities that are really struggling and spending most of their CARES Act money around election costs. So then, um, police and fire, we're, um, providing this additional coverage, 25% from the CARES Act, 75 from FEMA. To make sure that we're protecting our residents and our, our staff. And then you'll see, we've been discussing with the schools, what they're going to need from us to supplement their budget for all the same things that we're talking about. Because the school side of the equation is very difficult to facilitate in-person learning and very expensive. And then lastly, you'll see this big number here for the senior center, this outdoor space. We have received authorization from the state to create an outdoor space, whether that be a deck or a pavilion or something, so that we can provide senior services. Rutland is building a big pavilion with a like 40 by 30 pavilion with a, with a roof. We're looking to, to add deck space to the outside of our slave building. So that we can do services for our seniors, small lunches, small gatherings and, uh, small services. So that is, um, what we're working on. Certainly open to, to your comments, questions, concerns and suggestions. In terms of the FY20 and 21 budget, until we know the state aid number, which has no endpoint at this, at this current time. And until we know the school number, which also has no endpoint at this current time, we really cannot finalize the 21 budget or even start talking about 22.
So if the, the 21 budget is 426,000 additional you just wrote there, you just showed there and, and let's just pull the 200 out for the assessment. That's fine. So the, if it's 226,000, um, of, and sort of, um, non-approved monies, um, or expected monies, or whatever word you want to use, that, um, so those are, the money is going to be expended as we use them, which will be sort of in real time. Is it a similar reimbursement scheme that's happening right now?
Yes. So in quarter two, which is somewhere after October, we will be allowed to submit for our expenses through December 30th. And that's assuming that the state of emergencies continue through, uh, September and then again in December, which if I was to, to bet or to tell you what's going to happen, they will be. So we will be doing the same thing that we did for, for 20. So the idea here, the easiest way to explain it to people is anything that was COVID-related that we have to do in order to respond to keeping people safe, that people may or may not agree with, is being covered by the federal and state governments. So that we can do it. Otherwise, towns would be making decisions with limited resources like we have. We would not be providing spaces for seniors. Or you remember when we were having difficulty with the police coverage, talking about what it was going to cost? They don't want us weighing safety versus cost. They want us providing the services. You can only use this money for COVID. So it, it kind of provides us a nice opportunity to make sure we're doing what we're supposed to be doing.
Have they given us a guideline yet? There are so many guidelines and phases. Uh, do, does the, the switch flicking off of this have anything to do with phases that you know of? Or will there just be eventually, we're no longer in this state of emergency or, or is it tied to something else that they've been talking about? Any idea?
This is, so this is a speculation, but I'm willing to give my opinion. The governor's office on several calls has said that phase four won't begin until there's a vaccine or some type of treatment. So we're in this, this phase for the long run. Um, and this coverage will, will need, right now, the CARES Act money and other monies are authorized through December 30th, uh, 31st. So we have that in writing from the Department of Revenue saying, use this money to provide services and protections up until the end of this calendar year. And, uh, most, most town administrators and managers believe that this will continue past that.
Okay, thanks.
Ryan, I have a question for you regards to the senior situation. You, you mentioned, I have to agree with you that it's probably been the same position now probably into December. And you're mentioning providing space for them outside so that they can at least meet a little bit. What is in the plans for when the weather changes? All of a sudden, it's going to be too cold for outside and then we still got the, the problem of, uh, the same senior center. Any plans there or any thoughts?
So we did talk about that. Uh, my immediate reaction was let's get seniors some programming now. And into the fall, say we had an outdoor space, a deck or something, we could provide some type of services into the early winter with heaters, et cetera. The, the winter is going to be a challenge in general for COVID. It's a challenge for the school systems, for, for our town offices, for our parks and recreation. Right now, things seem to be opening up and easier because we have the open air to use and take advantage of. So we're trying to figure out the services for the summer and the fall, knowing that we have to figure out, as you said, that, that piece for the winter. And all of us are praying that there's a vaccine or a treatment or, um, a reduction in numbers to the point where, where we can do something else, but we can't plan that way. So we're just trying to figure that out.
Thank you. So Ryan, um, what is your, what is your confidence level that all the expenses on the 2020 and the 2021 balance sheet that you just showed us will be covered by this, um, CARES Act money or MEMA and FEMA? Are you confident that we'll get 100% reimbursement for all the money we outlay?
I, I am confident, yes.
Okay.
The, um, we had a call, Dennis and I had a call with FEMA. We went over the expenses. I've sent no less than two dozen questions to Department of Revenue. If I'm submitted anything that, that doesn't pass my test, I deny it or send it to, um, Department of Revenue in order to justify it. And I've been telling you and other folks, if I couldn't stand in front of my peers or, um, any state officials and say that we didn't need this or because of COVID, like if this cost didn't happen because of COVID, we're not, we're not going to do it. So it doesn't mean we're not being creative and trying to provide all the services. But I'm not comfortable outlaying, as you said, any money because of our resource situation that, that we don't feel confident we would get back. So I sent, for example, the exact description of what Chief Hayes wanted to do for fire coverage and said, is this, is this allowed under MEMA FEMA and encouraged under the CARES Act? And I got, yes, that is an expense that you and other towns are doing. So we didn't authorize that extra time until we had that go ahead. We are talking about a tent for, for the seniors. If we can't build a deck fast enough. We asked, is a tent allowed? And they said, yes. Many communities are doing tents and, and outdoor facilities. Uh, and we've been talking to each other about these expenses so that, so that we're all doing the same things. But there's no like Bible on what you can or cannot spend. So they're saying, you tell us what you need. And we're going to go with the idea that we're going to support you in that until, until you get absurd or ridiculous. So I feel confident. I'm never going to say 100%, but we also need to do stuff. We've got to get our seniors some services. We, we have to provide the services that residents want too. So I don't want to be doing nothing either. So I'm as confident as I can be.
I, I hear you and that's good. It sounds like we're proactive, proactively confirming that we're going to get reimbursed for these, for these expenditures, which, which is great. Uh, I just wanted to make sure that we're in line with that and going into 2021, we continue to do that so that if this money disappears or something out there, they decide it's going to change somewhere through the process that we don't get caught with our pants down.
Yeah. And it's a nice backstop because as Dan said, that number at the bottom, 426, most of those costs are FEMA, MEMA eligible. So we can almost pay for all of it with just the CARES Act if FEMA, MEMA says no. So we have, it, it would be hard for us to spend all the CARES Act money. It would. We, we would really have to try. So I'm, I'm trying to make sure that we do everything that we can and, and need to provide the services because I don't think we'll hit our allocation number. Or we can give majority of it to the schools, which is going to need a tremendous amount of resources to implement any of these plans that they're talking about.
And just one other thing on that, just to add in, and you, you mentioned it before, Ryan. It ties into what Chris was saying too, because it's important to, to note. Is, is FEMA is paying things years faster than normal, like for tornadoes or, you know, uh, seawall destruction. You know, a lot of the things that are normally covered by FEMA. It takes paperwork beyond your wildest dreams and years to get compensation and paid for back, which we need because we can't operate if we're fronting a year and a half of money, right? So the fact that they're paying so quick makes it, makes it that much, uh, more, uh, raises the confidence level.
Yeah. And it's, it's, I don't want to get too like accounting heavy, but this exists, as I'm saying, outside of the budget process. So even if it took a long time for reimbursement, it wouldn't hurt us until it came back. So we would just sit there as a liability until the grant, uh, zeroed it off. So the only problem that we might face is cash flow and we're allowed to access our CARES Act allocation whenever we need cash flow. So if we said, hey, I know you said submit it in quarter two, but we're running out of money because we're spending all this money on this, they'll give us more so that we can spend it. Then we just pay it back. So they're doing a good job, the state and the federal government of supporting us while telling us we have to do a tremendous amount of stuff. So it's a funded mandate for once.
All right.
Very good. Thank you.
Any else on that from anyone? Okay, uh, let's move on. Something a little bit easier. Uh, the, uh, foresee this Board of Selectmen meeting calendar. So you want?
Just as difficult, when you guys are going to meet?
I, I assume you put on here when in person as well, when that's going to start, right?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. It, it would be easier than facilitating movie night upstairs here. So, um, here is the calendar for you to, uh, look at, vote on, do, do what you need, push it off to next week. These, these dates are vetted against holidays and I believe school vacations, although I usually mess one of those up every year. So, um, this is the tentative schedule. If, uh, anybody sees any conflicts, of course, we can adjust and there are some months where the meetings are light intentionally so we can move them around if need, if needed. But this would carry us through this year to town meeting. It does not commit the board to this schedule, but just gives a framework and an expectation for the public.
I mean, that looks pretty good. Just right, just looking right off the bat, you got, you know, the sort of Christmas, the holiday season in there and then February and April vacation. When, when is Memorial Day this year? Is, is it like the 31st?
It's late.
So it would have to be the 31st because Monday, the 24th would be the second to last Monday if the 31st is Memorial Day.
Let me just make sure I'm not lying to you. Yeah, it's the 31st.
All right.
And then this big gap between next week's meeting and in August, and I, I believe most of the boards are aware, but my annual training is nine to 23 August at Fort Drum. And then I will need at least a week after to, to quarantine and COVID test. Although I'll be working remotely. So I'm going to be out of the picture for a couple of weeks, which is why that big gap is there.
Yeah, it sounds good. If we have to call a meeting, we'll just call a meeting. Looks all right to me. I don't know if anyone has any comments. I don't really see why we have to push it off unless there's discussion points you guys have.
I have one tentative conflict other than that on January 4. I have one tentative conflict other than that on January 4th. Depending upon what happens with COVID, you may not be in town.
We'll miss you.
I can, I can tell you, I can tell you right now, I will not be there next week. I'll be up in the northern territories. There is no law by an ability for me to be on the media.
Okay. Anyone else, or we want to entertain a motion to, to approve this?
I'll make the motion to approve the calendar dates for the Board of Selectmen meetings for town the year, for the remaining 2020 and 2021.
All started.
Discussion? On favor, roll call, Dan, yes? Pat?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Okay, unanimous. Sounds good. Moving on, so the next one is an annual. Katie, this one will probably be new for you. This is, and Chris, I can't remember when, when you, anyway, we were probably part of this, but anyways, selectmen liaisons and assignments. So, I don't know, Ryan, you want to just give a quick explanation for this?
Sure, so the, a common question we get from our boards, committees, and department heads is, who should I talk to on the Board of Selectmen to get on agendas, et cetera? So rather than having everyone flood one person or jump around, the boards, boards generally assign liaisons for, for content areas. And it's worked well so far. When people need, they, they know who to reach out to. So we put together the liaison list from last year. And anything in yellow is from Jamie abandoning you guys, so that hasn't been assigned because Jamie's not there. And of course, you can switch around if, if people wanted to do different things, but this is, this is the list as it exists now. The only other thing is Katie being special events. I, I don't know if we still need a liaison there, but just something to consider.
Okay, so I guess the way we can do this, we can, we can either, there's a couple ways. So I guess the first way is, is we just do like for like, and that would sort of be up to Katie, whether or not she wants to just have her name go into where Jamie's were, and then we can, you know, vote or discuss or whatever else. Or we table this, it being new this year as a new item, and we can all sort of have some time to take a look at it and see what our feelings are and discuss it at a future meeting. So I guess, you know, it's open for discussion here, what you guys want to do, you know, with, with this list now that we've seen it.
Well, I have no problem taking any spots. The only one that I really kind of really want is economic development. I know Pat was on it, and I don't know if he'd be willing to give it up. That's just kind of my sweet spot right there.
I should have said, sorry, I should have said to, to start that the board does need to assign an EDC, economic development, and a capital planning, because they're members of those boards as voters. Sorry, Pat.
No, I, I'd rather not be on the EDC. I just don't have time right now. So if Katie wants to do that, that's great.
Thank you, Pat.
Okay, anything else? I guess from anyone else or Katie? Ryan, want to scroll through that a little bit just so we can see the whole screen, or not the whole screen, but you know, we saw that portion of it again, just to make sure we're all seeing what we're seeing here.
I would just leave it like for like and have Katie take Jamie's spot. I mean, we don't really get much contact anyways.
No, we don't, and this is a one-year thing, so. Sounds fine to me. Katie?
Yeah, I'm fine with it. I have no problems.
All right, so I guess we can entertain a motion for an amended, amended list.
Yeah, I'll make the motion to approve the 2021 liaison list with the amendments.
Second motion.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll vote. It's a roll call. Dan, yes? Pat?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Sounds good. All right, unanimous.
And just, just for clarity, Dan, if the board can vote to appoint Katie to both capital planning and economic development, that would make it clean for Lori.
All right, we'll do that separately?
Yes.
And those were what again? Just, so I know you said it one second ago, but I already forgot.
Not economic development and capital planning.
Okay.
I'll make that motion. Appoint Katie to economic development and capital improvement.
Second motion.
Second, is it, is there any discussion? Seeing none, we'll vote. Roll call, Dan, yes? Pat?
Yes.
Chris?
Yeah.
Jeff?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Okay, sounds good. Does that do it there, Ryan?
Yes.
Okay, so something we'd like to take seriously, the next two items, which are 4E and F on our agenda, which are 4E, the Board of Selectmen Goals and Objectives, and 4F, the Town Administrator Goals and Objectives. So, you know, every year, we, we set these, you know, I think, you know, from my experience on here, Ryan's probably the most responsible and honest about, you know, sort of reviewing sort of both sets of goals, but specifically his own town administrator goals. And I know they're sort of in our packet, but I think, I think usually what we do is, you know, we'll take a look at them here, but then, you know, we'll decide in another meeting or two after we've had some time to digest them all, both sort of our own and new ones to come up with. I will set, you know, a deadline, and then also to recommend some for you. That'll probably be the way we should proceed, but, you know, up for discussion, and why don't we go through them a little bit from last year? All right, so this is our fiscal year 2020 goals that were done last, last July, I assume last July anyway, maybe it ran into August when, when we actually did it. I'm going to go through them, there aren't too many, but, you know, the, these, these can be repeated as well. So the first one, prioritize road maintenance by committing to large and small repair projects as outlined in the fiscal year 2024 road maintenance plan, continue to invest money into road repair when possible, and communicate status of the plan to the public on a semi-annual basis. I'm by no means going to just do a full-on rating system whether we've done all these right now, but I think, you know, any sort of comment from anybody, just please feel it free to chime in. I think we've done a very good job on, on the roads from what we wanted to do. The next one is continue to develop a plan to replace, repair, restore municipal building space, which is, as we know, a very, very difficult to do around here. The next one is empower the Economic Development Committee to continue to remove obstacles for smart growth, analyze bylaws, procedures, and town staff practices to make them business supportive and friendly. The next one is investigate and execute the sale use of town-owned land. We're going to talk a little bit later about that and some, some of the recent items that have, that have been, you know, sort of broached. The next one is continue to develop a transparent budget process that aligns with financial policies, goals, and reduces reliance on one-time revenues. A huge impetus put forth, you know, specifically by Ryan and, and making this a major priority, something I think we feel as well. The next one, develop plans for large impactful projects like increasing town senator service and working with the planning board to reclaim the town pit. I just before mentioned some, some recent events that, that we'll talk about a little bit later that, that have to do with, with this bullet. The next would be develop a stronger working relationship with the Quavon Regional School District to begin to address annual assessment inequities within the region. This is a tricky one because we had COVID in the middle of things, but I believe our relationship is strong, stronger than it has been in, in years past, specifically me being around here. I think there's a mutual respect that I don't think it's there yet, but fully, but I think it's coming. And then the last one was coordinate with the Parks Department to execute their five-year strategic plan, ensure the long-term viability of the Curtis recreational field. So those were our, our last year ones. I, I think just as of reading them, I can sort of in my own head think about which ones we actually dealt with and which ones we didn't quite get to, and whether those remain on there, if they still feel like they're important to us. But, but this is a sample of, of something that over the next, you know, call it month, that we can, you know, think about, review these things, talk about them again at another meeting, and then in the same time, come up with sort of our own and discuss in a future meeting for what our fiscal year 2021 goals will be.
Well, I'd like to, while we're on the subject, I'd like to talk a little bit about the Curtis Rec Field Sustainability that's on that list. You know, I, I brought up in the past that the bandstand is in need of a new roof. The gentleman that built that bandstand just recently passed away, and, you know, I'd like to see that get to the top of the priority list for that bullet point. The roof is imperative because, you know, not only is the bandstand the, the center point of the town, but it also houses irrigation system underneath that services three of the four fields up there. You know, I'm the liaison for the Parks Committee. I'd like to do a deep dive into that for the 2021 year, procure funds and a contractor to get their roof done, and maybe rededicate the bandstand in the name of F. David Tatten, who built the thing for us and gave it to town years ago.
That's great. Yeah, so that's the sort of thing we want to do, meaning come up with items like that that, that, you know, meet a lot to stand the town and, and see if we can come through with stuff like that. So anyone else have anything else they want to sort of bring up tonight?
Mr. Chairman, you do have, if, if it's, if his name's not covert, Ed Blanchard's in attendance with his virtual hand raised, so I don't know if you want to recognize him.
Of course.
Mr. Blanchard, you're here. Do you want to speak? Ed, you're muted, so if you want to unmute.
Okay. Do I need to give a video too?
You don't have to do anything you don't want. This is just fine if you want to keep it like this. We'd love to see you, but it's up to you.
Yeah, I'm wondering when I push to, in order to get it up, here we go.
I'm worried.
Oh. Well, I, I'm having a little trouble with getting on. I don't see where I can press video and, and get on. But I'll make it short. I know that Chris has just asked if the town would consider making the bandstand the, the David Tatten Memorial Bandstand and all of the Lions Club fully support that. I would just like to add to that one request. We would like to also provide a bench. We have one bench up there now that's for Louis Richards, and the Lions Club would like to add a bench for, for Dave Tatten. He was the prime engineer and the prime builder of the bandstand. And so I'd like if you're going to have a motion regarding the memorial, that it would include a bench, and the Lions Club will, will pay for certainly the bench and any signage that would be involved with, with the bandstand. And so it would be no cost to the town for making it the memorial bandstand.
Well, that's great. Appreciate that. It's, it sounds to me, Chris, you, you, you correct me if I'm wrong, but it sounds to me like you'll be doing your, what you call the deep dive into discussions with the Parks about sort of a plan up there, and I, I think incorporating that sort of thing into a plan is something you'd probably do.
Absolutely. That will absolutely be part of the grand plan to get it done.
Wouldn't, wouldn't that take a vote by, would it, would it take, I don't know the procedural, but would it take a vote by the select board in order to allow the bandstand to be named that?
Probably, but I, I, you know, I don't think we're, I think there's a sort of a master plan that in addition to what you were talking about, it sounded to me like we wanted to make sure we figured out all the different pieces and parts, including the roof and stuff. So I don't, I don't know that we're quite there to, to do that, or, I mean, maybe we are, I don't know. It felt like we were just sort of starting the discussion, but I don't know what, what you guys think.
I think, I think what, what the Lions Club is asking for, certainly the roof would be good to do, but this would be more or less changing the name of the bandstand and adding a bench, and that would be separate probably from the roof. The roof would maybe take more time to take care of and do that.
Okay, so you're talking about doing a bench soon?
Yes. We, Dave Tatten's obituary said that anybody wanted to make a donation toward, toward him would do it to the Lions Club. So the Lions Club felt that that would be one great way that we could honor him who spent so much time not only being, building the bandstand and engineering it, but many, 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 many tractor rides were at Field Day that Dave always drove. And, you know, I think it would, I think the whole club feels it would be a great way to memorialize him.
Yeah, me too. I, I understand now more, more than we're, we're separate, just on that item. I think I just assumed it was part of that, but I don't know, what you guys think? Sounds like a great, so Ed, what you're, what you're saying? Go ahead, Jeff.
I don't see it as a problem as far as now to okay the changing of the name and to go ahead with the bench. The way Ed's explaining it, I don't see that in any conflict with future things that we need to continue to look at for the bandstand.
Yeah, me neither. So what, what, so we're talking about, just so I'm clear, we're talking about renaming the bandstand and a bench?
Yes, there'd be a bench there, and we would rename the bandstand, and, and there'd be some signage probably on the bandstand itself, but the Lions Club would, would come before the board and show you, or, or the Parks Commission, either one, would show you what the signage might be so that it could be approved by someone from the town.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, you do have a meeting next week. I'm not one to put things off, but we could invite the Lions Club, the Parks Commission, and make this an agenda item for the public. It would only be a week in order to, to discuss it out. That, that is an option.
I'd like that a lot, you know, we don't need to, a week is fine, and to put it on and have anybody else in the public make comment about it is, would be certainly appropriate.
Yeah, thanks for the suggestion, and, and thanks for, for bringing it up in the first place. So it sounds like a good plan to me. Have all the interested parties as well as a little bit more notice that it is an agenda item because it's, you know, a focal point of the town there. So I think that, that makes a lot of sense. So, okay, anyone else want to comment on that?
Thank you very much for all your time. I'm going to leave the meeting now. You guys look great on the screen.
We wish you were on, we can say the same.
Take care.
All right. Okay, good stuff. Ryan, I think we were just about coming to your turn for how you, you do what you like to do as far as presenting the former goals and the new goals, or if you're going to put a similar timeframe like we just did as far as, you know, getting to it and how you want to do this.
So I would like to, and I know I provided you an in-depth that I'll show briefly here and walk through briefly. The reason why I personally take goals so seriously from the board is it helps me structure my workload for the year, and it tells me what you want me to, to work on and to emphasize so that, you know, I'm doing the bidding of the board. So a lot of your goals end up being my goals intentionally because I am your agent, so... So the reason why I focus on it so heavily is for that reason. The, just put together as I've done last couple of years, my goals laid out in more of a visual form for you, so I'll just walk through briefly. The community outreach goals were to visit local businesses, to hold public hours, to commit to outreach and to investigate some of these bigger projects. The first, I did tour quite a few businesses with the Economic Development Committee and was on quite a roll until COVID hit, but that doesn't mean we can't figure out a new way to do it and continue it in FY21. The coffee hours, again, I was starting to ramp up towards this and I'm not going to use COVID as an excuse for most things, but I believe I started the virtual hours and can now work towards, and I'd already talked to the Hub Diner about small meetings and posted videos in order to communicate some of these things to the public. Outreach, I feel like we have a pretty robust presence. We've eclipsed 1,400 subscribers on Facebook, a couple hundred on Twitter, and have a pretty extensive mailing list. So we're reaching people on social media. I'm pretty disappointed in the Gardener News' coverage of our town, but we've been reaching out to them and letting them know we're doing big things if they wanted to write about it. And then in terms of the fourth item, which is the biggest, the water and sewer was handled, that investigation was handled by the MVP project. I am having difficulty getting our dispatch to focus on the cell service in town, and you don't normally hear me talk like that, but we do have a plan for this and it is pending and could be done if perhaps we got some more pressure from other boards and residents to show the importance of this in our regional association with dispatch. But the plan is to-
Should we invite Mr. Moriarty to a meeting?
I think so. And I think it's time. So basically, the plan is to put up this dispatch tower that's been due for five or six years and then add cell service to it. So we did disrupt it a little bit because I wanted to make it tall enough to solve some of our cell problems, but it's something that could be done and it definitely isn't being held up by COVID. So then the town pit, I'll talk about this a little bit in my report, but we have been heavily working with consultants to get you a plan for what can or cannot be done in the town pit to include affordable housing, senior housing, and light commercial industrial applications. The goal of this investigation is to let you know what you can do and what it would cost so that the board and other boards in town can make decisions. The main issue I had when this was established as a goal for me is there were so many ideas about what could be done that it was almost paralysis. So trying to narrow it down to a few options might allow something to push through in the coming years. In terms of department goals, so this is what I see as my role in managing the staff and coordinating department function. So we had all of our departments complete improvement plans and then we got whacked with working remotely, so we're going to do both of those in '21. So how we can do both in-person and remote improvement plans for each department, but we were able to accomplish quite a bit at a department level. I feel like each department has taken ownership of its functions and is working to improve it, make it more remote, make it more accessible and stronger, more transparent. I feel like you did, Mr. Chairman, that we've done a good job working with the Quabon Region and meeting with them. We don't always agree on long-term planning. It's set up so that we don't always agree, but we do have productive conversations and are moving towards a longer-term plan. We're 95% of the way through our IT upgrade, which was vital, and that should be complete in the next couple of months because we have the funding from town meeting to complete it. Department heads are now more focused, which was a goal of mine, which is appreciated by the staff, I believe. So instead of calling a bunch, I am just keeping them strategically focused throughout the year and then communicating with the staff via email, which caveated nicely into the remote world. And then one thing, one goal that I would really like to keep and improve on is making sure that I make boarding committee meetings. I'd like to go to every single one of them. I still haven't done that in my nearly two and a half years now. I've communicated with all boards, but it is good to go to meetings, making sure that you're showing support. Human resources, done a lot of work here and you can see the goals, the ones we finished are the welcome guides and the procedures for new hires. We feel like we strengthened that using a lot of staff input. And then getting all of our employees onto an understandable and transparent wage scale for them and for the public, that's complete, thanks to the board as well. I have not gotten to the finalizing of HR policies that was held up in our grant process, but is in progress and will be finished soon, and then that will lead into making sure all of our folders are compliant. Sounds simple, but it's an important function that we need to complete. In terms of budget and finance, Kelly and I have been working mostly recently on working remote procedures out and closing 20 and doing the CARES Act, so we have not gotten to updating our financial policies, but we will get that done in '21. It'll be a top goal. Creating savings targets for the board to understand, empowering the CIPC and making that part of the budget process. I feel like we completed that this year and I think the quarterly financial reports are useful and full of information. And then for infrastructure, we've committed to this planning around our infrastructure and understanding it. So the five-year capital plan, the road maintenance plan are definitely public, transparent, and we're following them so that people can provide legitimate and structured input that allows us to make the town better with our limited resources. In terms of visiting all the major infrastructure, I have done that physically, visited all the major pieces, and I'm working on a plan for you, not ready for the public, but on how we can document and geocode all of these so that we can create the same type of maintenance plan for culverts, bridges, and other infrastructure that needs to be not forgotten about. Not that it has been, but to have a process like the five-year road plan or the five-year capital plan would be really helpful there. So I consider that a definitely something I want to continue in FY21. I might be able to grant that out for you. And then these are my personal goals. For professional development, I was able to attend a couple of professional conferences and meet with fellow town managers and town administrators that I respect and that are well past my understanding in terms of their careers, et cetera, and develop some lessons learned and some targeted approaches to being better at my job. Human resources was my vision goal and creating a budget that could win an award in terms of its transparency is definitely something I've been working towards and would like to try and progress again in FY21. And then for department goals, a lot of it is focused on this idea of economic development, making sure that everything is tied together into one master plan, including these bigger projects. So that is my accountability to you in terms of my goals. Definitely missed a couple of things, some things that are still in progress and then some things that I feel like we did a good job with.
Okay, great. And then your next year's goals or next fiscal year's goals, you know, we'll discuss and have a chance to go over those at a future meeting as well.
And I provided, and I'll just show it briefly, the board with just some notes, basically a draft of where my head's at in terms of what's needed, drawing from the accountability document and discussions with departments, trying to listen to the board and anticipate your needs. So this is sort of a first draft to guide what you think, but you can cut, revise, add as much as possible, which would really focus my work and make sure I'm accomplishing the things you want me to do. One of the things that I do think needs explanation is I've been working on this concept of what is Hubbardson going to look like in 10 years, Hubbardson 2030, if you want to get corny, but the idea that we're finishing our master plan, we have these strategic budget goals, we have these large projects, and it all needs to be tied together to shape what is the town going to be in a few years. Would love that to be part of my higher-level strategic goals for the year, because I think we can get that done and get the boards on the same page to make sure that we're moving the town in the direction that everybody wants it to move in and take advantage of the little resources we have in the most impactful way.
Ryan, if I could ask you a question. Will we be discussing tonight or will it be a coming up meeting, a visit we had at the pit last week with the various contractors? And will we be talking about that? Because that's something I feel strongly we need to keep as a major goal.
Yeah, I mean, we can talk about it now or in my town administrative report. I was going to update the board on that and ask you to talk about it.
That's fine.
Okay, so we'll talk about that in a moment. Ryan, can you open up? I'm just going to set some goals for us here. Can you open up our meeting calendar again? All right, so we're July 27th now. Feels like a month should be, or plus should be, you know, enough time. So why don't we say August 31st? So we'll have a month to go over both to review our last year's goals, to come up with some additional goals, and then as Ryan just pointed out, his notes for fiscal year '21 and any thoughts that we have on that. So can we, can we just all, you know, be prepared on August 31st to either talk about ones that are important to us or repeat ones or whatever we want to do? But why don't we, why don't we, why don't we set August 31st as that date? Okay? Okay, just making a note here. So Ryan, you ready to move on?
Yes.
All right, so our next item would be the last item from item four. That'd be 4G, that's the, you know, post-election town appointments and vacancies, sort of where we stand with that.
Okay, so just first of all, I just want to thank Bobby for focusing on this goal. So one of the things that's very important is who's appointed, who's doing what, who appoints them, and making sure that we have all of our vacancies filled, because without people doing all of this work, we can't accomplish all of these goals that we're talking about. So it's more complicated than people think. We have to look at state law, charter, bylaws, and then go through all the boards, this board, not this version, but boards in the past have created these committees and they have certain compositions. So what we didn't want to do is just put stuff in front of you and not really vet it and make sure that it was accurate. We've also taken all of this stuff that we've been talking about in terms of appointments and vacancies and entered it into a software that we can now make part of a process and a policy that'll make sure our annual appointment is easy, right? If someone resigns, we take them off. If someone's appointed, we put them in. And then each year, we get a list that we just go and go. So that's a long-term goal and Bobby's been going, I've been driving her crazy trying to get this done, but she's been really focused on it and done a lot of good detailed work and I appreciate it. So what we have now for you is the appointments that were missed in the last appointment cycle that we need to do. And then we talk about vacancies and there's just a couple, a couple of things we need to have a discussion about. So the first one is the vacancies.
Hey Bobby, can you unmute and join us for this discussion? Just feels like you're going to be the most knowledgeable on it. Hi, thanks.
Okay, so I told you there would be some Wednesdays and Tuesdays we just needed to clean up. Some of these jobs are really important, like, you know, our town treasurer, but we want to make sure that we appointed everybody by regulation and law. So these are, some of these are appointed by me, some of them are appointed by you, but it would help me to just, we can all appoint this together by vote, these remaining positions. And if you'll notice, the last two, Alice Livedall and Francois, these are votes from the planning board in order to staff their ex officio positions on those boards. They still need to do one more for the, for economic development, but this formalizes those appointments for them. So what would be needed, if there's no questions, is an appointment of this list for this one year term.
Even the first two are one-year terms? They're not the 630?
Correct. And Bobby and I went through this today. So Mass General Law says that Board of Registarians need to be appointed from April to April. So this is one of the weird ones that we need to just keep track of.
I make a motion then to accept the appointment list as presented for the, for the one-year period.
Any discussion? I'll just add one thing. Ryan, do we need to clarify that they're retroactive to the dates here?
Yes, please.
All right, Jeff, will you amend your motion?
To accept the list of appointments as presented and retroactive to, was it the date, for 1/2020?
And 630? Is that right? Did he say 630? I just wasn't sure.
Or as presented?
I think we're covered.
Sounds good. Is that, that's your second? Okay, any further discussion? No, vote, be roll called, Dan? Yes, Pat?
Yeah.
Jeff? I think you're on mute, Jeff. Are you on mute?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Chris? I assume that, was there a yes there? Anybody hear that? Kate?
Yes.
Okay, unanimous?
Okay, and now I've changed the document on your screen to vacancies. So as we've stated in the past, we got a lot of volunteerism in town, people that want to be a part of the things that you're doing. So not a lot to advertise, but we would like to advertise these. These are the positions that we are recommending that you advertise because of vacancies. I don't need to vote for this, but I'm looking for any disagreement as to advertising these open until August 31st, like your other recommendations from the planning board and Economic Development Committee.
Okay, the one I'd just like to comment on, which is not going to be a surprise, and there were, I did have an email going between Ryan and Bobby and I earlier today. So the Town Center Committee, quick history, been around five years. That originally had a specific listing that comprised the nine members. That included a planning board member and included a library trustee, historical commission for various reasons, mostly that people didn't want to come on the committee or showed up. They were no longer on the committee and did not fulfill the obligation and/or gets sworn in. So the committee has evolved over time to include the non-specific members to the sort of original. And so I guess, I think my recommendation, just from being on the committee and not wanting to exclude anybody who was on it, who's been on it for so long, is to just revise, because we would do that, the select board, on who those members of the Town Center Committee can be. So what that would look like if everyone's sort of okay with it tonight. And I think the easy, I've been thinking about this today since the emails came out. At this point, and this is sort of to Ryan's point to me, was that since most of the work has been done and that Town Center Committee is more going to be an oversight committee, you know, moving forward here over the next couple of years, instead of stipulating a select board member, who is me currently, and a planning board member, and a library trustee, and a town resident, Main Street resident, all that, I think it should easiest based on the current committee, the way it's made up is just to have an unrestricted nine-member committee. So, you know, there's one open spot, there's eight right now that are on it and there's one open spot, but I don't know if you guys want to ask questions about that, if anyone has any issues with- But I don't know if you guys want to ask questions about that, if anyone has any issues with that. But that's just my opinion from, from being on it and knowing who's on it now and, and I wanted to exclude anybody who's currently on it. Does it seem all right to everybody?
Yeah, seems great.
All right. So procedurally, Ryan, how, how would we, and Bobby, I guess, how, how would you guys want to see us do this?
So it looks like there's no objection. We will advertise these positions open to August 31st. And then at your next meeting, hopefully we have a bunch of people to appoint. So I don't need any action there unless you want to change something. For the Town Center Committee, that would just be a simple vote to change the composition from its current to your recommendation of nine unrestricted positions.
Okay, someone want to make that motion?
I'll, I'll make that motion.
Okay. There a second there?
I'm sticking to the motion.
Okay, Jeff seconded. Any discussion? I see nothing further. So we'll do a roll call, vote. Dan, yes. Pat?
Yeah.
Jeff?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Chris?
Yeah.
Okay, unanimous. All right, thank you. Is that, is that, do it for that, Ryan?
It does. We're like 99% there.
All right. Thanks Bobby.
You're very welcome.
Okay. Okay, so next is item five, which is old business. I don't have anything, anyone have any old business they want to bring up at this time? No? Okay, we'll move on into item six, which is your town administrator budget, please.
Okay, so as it's becoming normal, I, I covered a lot of this during the meeting, which is, which is good. It should be, this report should be matching the things that we're discussing and talking about. So no, nothing further on COVID-19 or department reports. I don't think I missed anything here. And then, oh, one thing in this department report, we are adding two computers to our town offices. So one will be in the library basement and one will be in the slate building on a cart. Those will be set up to allow for residents to pay for bills online, do permitting. So this allows us to create additional distance from the staff, but also support people in, in doing things online. We're also going to look for grant opportunities or perhaps even use COVID money to try and bring the rest of our permitting system online as well. So this matches that overall goal. In terms of financial management, the only thing that I can say is continue to predict a late September, early October special town meeting for cleaning up some of the capital items like Chris brought up. The Benson roof would be part of, part of that discussion. And then any changes to the budget that need to be made based off the state budget and the school budget. All of those things will need to happen around that timeframe. So just continuing to set that expectation that we'll have a, a early fall town, town meeting. Infrastructure, I just want to talk briefly about chapter 90. So a lot of work is going on right now on Flag, Mount Jeff, Hill Road Extension. And these are nearing completion. So we have been getting some comments that the road looks a little thin, et cetera. It's supposed to. So we reclaim those surfaces and they will be adding the top coat. If it didn't start today, it'll be this week, which should bring most of the surface up to three inches, like, like is the norm across town roads that have been reclaimed.
There's some happy people on Flag Road.
Yeah. I drove every bit of this with Travis last week. And I was looking at old pictures from last year when we built this plan and it, you can't even, it's, it's unbelievable. So one good piece of good news is that the, the bid came in lower than we thought. So Travis worked within procurement to extend some of the, some of the projects. So more roads recovered or more sections of road to include the intersection of Mount Jeff and Old Cross Road. And I'll, I'll be honest, I'm not, I'm not positive that's the intersection. So I, I forgot to, to double check that, but I believe that is the intersection I'm talking about. And Katie, am I right there?
Yes, much better.
That was one she was happy to hear about. So we're actually putting four inches on that because a lot of people use that intersection. So we were able to add that as part of this project. There is a piece of, of dirt road left on Mount Jeff that's received a couple of comments in between these two sections. We did, we tried to make it a habit not to pave our not paved roads. So we only paved the sections that were previously paved and reclaimed. So that, that piece is there as a dirt road that will be part of our annual dirt road maintenance piece. But we do spend a lot of time there and attention to make sure that it is a very nice dirt road. And then so that's, that's that update. One, one piece of bad news, there was a pretty significant ceiling collapse in the slate building in the police department. Nobody was injured, although there was one police officer in the building. Essentially, there was too much weight on the ceiling tiles. The, it doesn't look like they were secured properly. So those fell. We're looking at all of our options, including insurance and other replacements. And we're having someone come look at it tomorrow. One problem is it is leaking cold air, air conditioning out. So it's, it's pretty intolerable in there for our police officers, which is unfortunate. So if we can't get a quicker fix or stabilize that part, we will look for some remote air options just to keep them in a non-hostile environment. And then we'll have some recommendations in terms of cost, but it, it might be a FinCom reserve transfer type situation. This could be a pretty significant repair, 10,000 to 15,000, depending on how much roof we have to fix, not roof, ceiling. So not great news, but it is what it is. And I wanted to bring that to the board before you hear about it from someone else. We are working to fix it. Hey, this is what, this next piece is what Jeff was talking about. So Jeff, Alice and I met with some consultants to review plans for the town pit. So we drove out there as a group socially distanced. And this is based off guidance from the Board of Selectmen and the Planning Board to do something with this area. So again, what I'm looking to do is to get you the, these things can or cannot be done. And here's what they may or may not entail. And here's what the costs are. So if we can put together a plan, that would take away some of the dream-type projects, as I would call them, or the non-impactful projects and focus the efforts in this area. So a couple of things that have been talked about are affordable housing and senior housing. Those are planning board goals. And then some light industrial applications that came from conversations during last year's Board of Selectmen goals and conversations I've had with other boards and community members that, that want to see old projects revitalized in that area. So what would come next from this is a proposal from the consultants to, to put together a, a study or a plan for this area that, that we may or may not be able to action. And I don't know if, if Jeff, you want to add anything to that? Jeff, I don't know if you want to add anything from our visit to the town pit.
Yeah, I didn't, I'm sorry. I didn't hear, I didn't hear you transfer it to me. I'd just like to add that the, as I've been on the board, I have, this is one thing I've always been very much in favor of pursuing and revisiting the pit last week, just reinforced even more. And listening to the contractors and the consultants, basically looking at it and saying, you've got a gold mine here. It's just a question of what to do. So I strongly want this to continue to be one of our major goals, to try to get something going there.
So just on, on this piece, again, to set expectations, we only own the entryway really into this pit area. We'd have to work with our neighbors in order to create a larger project. And, you know, there, there are some things that can be done, but nothing is going to happen overnight. And there, there are some reclamation that need to be done and some leveling of areas that, that could be pretty costly. So again, we just want to get you information so that we can make a decision here. No one should expect that, that this is something that's going to happen, you know, in FY '21. Okay, and then moving on to employee recognition. So just wanted to take a moment to, to recognize Mallory Seaman from our land use department. So she's taken on work with the Board of Health, the Building Department in the Concom in a land use assistant role. And then she does a whole lot more for me, given her, her expertise in this area. So she was able to, in addition to her regular duties, which are extensive, fully implement the new online building department software. She's assisted with the Senior Center reopening research, providing them with examples and reaching out to folks for them. She helped me secure information about online permitting for all departments, as you heard me say earlier. And then she's completed several timely research projects on town land, which has helped me advance many of these projects that you saw. So it, it is her expertise and her support that's allowing some of this stuff to move forward. So it's an example of the type of professionalism and dedication that lets us do big things, even though we have a small staff. So very grateful for Mallory. She puts in a lot of effort and, and has to navigate many different waters. So I believe I owe her just a, a little bit of recognition that the team wouldn't be as effective without her.
Great. Yeah, we have a really well-run little town.
Big things for a little town.
Okay, well, I appreciate that. Nothing further on, on the TA report?
Nope, that's it.
Sounds good. All right. So we're up to item seven. We've got some policies to review. Or, or I guess to talk about reviewing them. I, I don't, I don't know if we're all quite ready to, to approve these yet or, or to discuss them. But just real quick, we've got the, the work-related travel, which is a pretty quick one. I looked at that, two paragraphs, and that was generous, calling it two. The public records request, which is, which is amended somewhat recently, because, because back in, if you were doing this sort of thing, 2016, was it? I think it was. It became, it changed in 2016 pretty significantly. And, and we were going through some public records requests at that time and it became like almost all encompassing for a while. So that is something to, worth it to readdress and then records management. So you okay if we push this one off to next week? Give us a little bit of time to go through them?
Yeah, just wanted to mention to you, the reason for the, bringing these up is, is I'm recommending that we don't need these as standalone policies. Work-related travel, I believe this, in my research, related back to a time when you didn't have a town administrator or someone central organizing the staff. So the idea of travel or conferences and stuff would, would maybe skip by the board, but it, it, it all has to be approved to, including expenses through me. So you don't necessarily need a standalone policy unless you wanted it. The, you could just direct me and if I did it wrong, fire me. So you don't really need a policy for that. So the, the next thing would be records management and the other one, I'm sorry.
Record, uh, records requests.
Yeah, those are, those are run by state policy and law. So we can defer to the state policy and law. As Dan said, it was probably put together to, before there was a, a set procedure, but we can't supersede that law anyway. So you're just, just restating law. So you can have your own standalone policy, but in, in part of our effort to clean everything up and trying to get less for you guys to review and stuff, we're just recommending that we take these off the plate.
All right, I, I probably spoke too soon, but I still say, can we just push them off to next week? Just give them one more perusal, just to make sure there's nothing that jumps into mind?
Yeah, for sure.
Okay, so we're at item eight, appointments and resignations. There are none. Or item nine, wage authorizations, correct? So we have some, some minutes to approve from July 13th, 2020. Can you call us up real quick? Okay, I've been doing this a long time. I still can't remember. So Chris joined late. How does, should, should he vote on minutes for that which he wasn't a full part of?
So interestingly, a board member can vote for minutes that they weren't there. It's just not normally done, just out of courtesy or procedure. But definitely can vote on something where he was there in, in some way. And, and you are allowed to vote on minutes, even if you weren't there, unless it's a board policy not to.
Okay, well, we, we have these in front of us here. Does somebody want to make a motion for the July 13th minutes?
I'll make a motion to accept the July 13th, 2020, what is Selectmen meeting minutes?
Pat, you're muted. Seconded. Any discussion? Okay, we'll vote, a roll call. Dan, yes. Jeff?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Chris?
abstain.
Chris abstains and four yeses. Okay, thank you. So that was it for minutes. Committee updates? I don't have any. We're just holding off for our next Town Center Committee, which we've made quarterly now, as we get into the final phases of, final phase of design. But we do plan on having one in and around when that's due. And I did get an update. I can't remember what it is offhand from TEC about when that final design will be available this, this early fall. So I'll report more back when, when I have it. Item 12, as matters not reasonably anticipated by a chair. I, I don't have anything. Does anyone have anything else here that they want to bring up? I don't see anything. So item 13, public press, question and answer. We, we have an attendee with a hand up. Is this the right time? You're going to have to vet that one for me, Ryan.
So listed as.
So that was bruh.
Our, our first Zoom bomb.
All right, we've been bombed.
It could have been worse.
So as we, we'll put our cyber people on that right now to find out who that was and, you know.
That was the critique in the meeting, I think.
Yeah, no, it's a federal offense now.
It was one of your kids. Whose, whose is it?
Well, obviously yours.
Mine are too young. No, probably not, actually.
No, that's like. All right, okay. So that was, anyone else? Public press? I don't see anybody else. Okay, so it is 7:58.
To a turn.
I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion? We'll come and vote. Roll call, Dan, yes. Jeff?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Pat?
Yes.
Chris?
Yeah.
Okay, unanimous. Bye, everyone.